Good evening, everyone. I know there's a lot of activity out there in the hallway. So come on in. I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting and the successor agency to the former Katati Community Redevelopment Agency for this Tuesday, October 10th, 2023. And with that, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Rivers?
Here.
Councilmember Lemus?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sparks?
Here.
Mayor Harvey?
Here.
And we'll show Councilmember Ford as absent.
Okay, thank you for that. Then if everyone would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you for that. And then we will be moving on to Item 4, which is approval of the minutes and notice of waiving a reading of all resolutions and/or ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this Agenda Action Item. And we have one item under there, which is the meeting minutes for our regular meeting on September 26th. Are there any questions or comments from the council on this? Seeing none, I will open this up for public comment. Any public comment on our minutes for September 26th? Not seeing anybody rush up here. I don't see any hands in the audience. Kevin, could you please check with our Zoom audience?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment on approval of the minutes, please use the raise hand icon at this time. Mayor Harvey, that'll end the public comment.
Thank you so much for that. Then I would be looking for a motion on the minutes.
Move to approve the minutes.
On second?
I have motion in second, all in favor. Aye. And let that show four yeses and one absent, please. All right, moving on to announcements. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers, in conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted City Council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the City Council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizens' business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the City Council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the City Council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. Next, Measure S supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at kataticit.org. Next, citizens are interested in receiving City of Katati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up with Civic Ready by signing up on the city website at www.kataticit.org under that "How Do I" link at the top of the page. Next, like always, we love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600 or info@kataticit.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Nextdoor, and Civic Ready. Is that rather than Nixla? I got that right? Okay. All righty. So that concludes the announcements, and we will move on to proclamations. And the first proclamation I have is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Katati recognizing October 24th as Polio Awareness Day. And I believe Len, you are here to receive this, and I will read it. You can come up. We'll read. Thank you so much. Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Katati recognizing October 24th, 2023, as Polio Awareness Day. Whereas in 1985, Rotary International launched Polio Plus and spearheaded the global polio eradication initiative with the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and UNICEF to immunize the children of the world against polio. And whereas polio cases have dropped by 99% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. And whereas to date Rotary has contributed more than $1.2 billion and countless volunteer hours to the protection of more than 2 billion children in 122 countries. And whereas these efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical personnel, laboratory equipment, and education materials for health workers and parents. And whereas Rotary Clubs in Monarch Park and throughout the world have sponsored service projects to address issues such as poverty, health, hunger, literacy, eradication of polio worldwide. Now therefore, be it proclaimed on this 10th day of October 2023 by the City Council of the City of Katati, that October 24th, 2023 is proclaimed as Polio Awareness Day in Katati. So thank you, Len. Did you, would you like to say anything?
Just a couple of items that you took quite a few notes I had here, but that's fine. 3 billion children in 122 countries have been vaccinated so far. It's 400 million children immunized against polio every year. We have eight children have contracted polio at this time, this year, and last year at the same time was 28. So incrementally, we're getting there, but it's not totally eradicated yet. Afghanistan and Pakistan are two endemic countries left, and because of the situation over there, it's difficult to get that last child. And, but we're working on it. And of course, there've been some volunteers who've been killed over there vaccinating because there's some issues involving the Western world, so. But I thank you.
Thank you. And would you like to have a picture?
Sure.
Sure. Okay.
The chief knows me, so I don't care.
We have some other one reason for us to here.
Yeah, just light up right here.
If you'd like to join us. We have our expert photographer here.
I'm gonna stand with you because it's just a matter of time till I jump. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Keep up the good work, one by one. It will happen. Next, we have a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Katati recognizing October 2023 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And we do not have anyone for this proclamation, but I will read it. And here we go. Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Katati recognizing October 2023 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas while considerable progress has been made in the fight against breast cancer, it remains the most frequently diagnosed type of non-skin cancer and the second-leading cause of cancer deaths among women in our country. And whereas thanks to earlier detection and better treatments, mortality rates for breast cancer have steadily decreased. And whereas knowing what may constitute or contribute to breast cancer symptoms, screening, and early diagnosis are essential parts of its prevention and reducing mortality rates. And whereas having access to screenings and early detection for all women is an essential component in the fight against breast cancer. And whereas during the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we stand with our mothers, daughters, sisters, and friends as we recognize all who have joined their loved ones in fighting their battle, as well as the advocates, researchers, and healthcare providers whose care and hard work gives hope to those living with breast cancer. And whereas by educating ourselves and supportive innovative research, we will improve the quality of life for all residents affected by breast cancer and one day defeat this terrible disease. Now therefore, be it proclaimed on this 10th day of October 2023 by the City Council of the City of Katati, that October 2023 is proclaimed as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Katati. And I do note that the officers are also supporting that, and they have badges on, yeah, there we go, thank you, on their, on their uniforms. So thank you for supporting Breast Cancer Awareness Month also. All right. And next, we have a proclamation I hear. Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Katati recognizing October 9th as Indigenous Peoples' Day. And is Jack here? Has Jack arrived?
He is not in the chamber, but I don't know about Zoom. Could've possibly been there.
I do not see Jack on Zoom. So, all right, well, maybe he'll arrive. So we have a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Katati recognizing October 9th as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Whereas the City of Katati strives for diversity and acceptance and seeks to uplift and uphold human rights and dignity within its community. And whereas since Columbus Day 2015, at least 11 states and 129 cities in the United States have passed measures designating the second Monday in October as October Indigenous Peoples' Day. Whereas historians have largely agreed that Columbus did not discover the Americas as indigenous people were already here, nor was he the first European to reach the New World. And whereas Columbus represents the start of the European colonization of the Americas, including the societal injustices committed against the native inhabitants. And whereas the recognition and acknowledgement of Indigenous Peoples' Day is intended to celebrate and recognize the original inhabitants of Sonoma County. And whereas the recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day acknowledges the resistance, persistence, existence, and living history of Sonoma County indigenous people, including the coastal Miwok, who were the original inhabitants of the area now called the City of Katati. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that October 9th, 2023 is Indigenous Peoples' Day in the City of Katati, and the City Council encourages all residents to celebrate and recognize indigenous communities and cultures in Sonoma County. All right. Thank you. And thanks for that. Okay. Moving on. Let's see, we have presentations, and our first presentation, I believe, is going to be a badge pinning ceremony for our new police K-9 Dolly. And Chief, are you gonna take this one?
I'm gonna take this one, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Officer Sullivan and K-9 Dolly post. She's a little bashful right now. So this is our, you guys already know Officer Ryan Sullivan, of course. This is Dolly. And everybody's wondering why a police dog is named Dolly. So I'm gonna start with that. So I knew I wanted a bloodhound, and I knew I wanted a female. And so when this, when the vendor, when the company from Florida called me, they told me that they had a litter, and I told them, they knew I wanted a female. And they sent me eight, eight dogs, picture of eight dogs, looked like Hollywood Squares on my computer screen. And I said, okay, if you were picking a dog, which dog would you pick? And he said, Dolly. And I said, why? And he said that they named her Dolly after Dolly Parton because her personality was the biggest out of the litter. And he says, I think you should go, I recommend this dog. So that's how we came up with, well, they came up with Dolly's name, we didn't, but that's why she is Dolly. So yeah, so she's been in Florida for her eight-month life. And Ryan flew to Florida on Sunday, September 30th. He spent, oh, five days with Dolly, training with her. They stayed in a motel together to bond, and then they, they flew back to California on Delta Airlines together. She will live with his, with her handler. And so I was, I was looking at the retirement of Remo. I was thinking about going the direction of a canine that would detect narcotics, but then fentanyl's so prolific, I was worried about that. So fentanyl, it doesn't just harm users, it harms first responders and canines. So that's why I ended up looking closer at bloodhounds. And I'm, I'm from Merced County, and the Merced County Sheriff's Office has a pretty robust bloodhound program down there, and I know people. And so that's where I came up with the idea to deploy a bloodhound for our city. So that's where that came from. So there are no bloodhounds, there are no canine bloodhound teams in Sonoma County, not in the North Bay, not in, not in our region. I know of canine bloodhound teams in Merced County, Southern California, and for whatever reason, Chico. Now, there are sheriff's offices that, that have access in Northern California, there are sheriff's departments that have access to bloodhounds for searches, but they're not canine bloodhound teams, they're more civilian search and rescue teams. So we're gonna be it for up here. So another, another Katati first. And again, she's, she is a puppy. I guess she's about 45 pounds. Ryan said the vendor said she would get to be about 65 pounds, so she's got a little ways to go. And so me and Ryan and Dolly will publicly, publicly admit that we are not the experts in this, right? Because nobody is around here, but we're confident we're gonna get there. So this is, this program, it's not gonna happen overnight. We got, we got a lot of training to do, a lot of thinking to do, but somebody's gotta, somebody's gotta start it, right? So that's gonna be us. So dogs have certain disciplines, right? So like a bomb dog, for example, can't be a bomb dog, drug narcotics dog, right? It's either, you know, a bomb dog detects explosives, not drugs, that's just not how it works. So it's gotta be specific. So Dolly's trained to find people. She's a people finder. That's her job. So she's a police dog, so of course she will find criminals, right? But she will also find at-risk, missing people as well. And then when she does find them, she will sit, and she will not even bark. She will just sit and be still and quiet. And I'm gonna talk more about that in a minute, but that's what she's trained to do. I've seen videos of her, they've been sending them to me past couple months, and watching her train day and night in all different types of environments, because they got exposure to, you know, just about everything. So there's some interesting tools that, that come with this program. So one is, there's like, there's this mini vacuum, that vacuum sent into a gauze, and then the gauze can be given to Dolly to search for somebody. So we could have a, we could be in a pursuit and have somebody crash a car and run on us and get away for the time being, because Ryan can deploy this vacuum, vacuum this, this seat where the person was sitting, and present that scent to Dolly, and then start, start a search for the fugitive, as you will. Also, there's another tool, I'm sure there's more, but I'm just gonna talk about a few. But there's another tool, there's a scent kit that somebody can keep at their home. So obviously, some populations are vulnerable to being, to be at-risk, missing people, right? So people with autism, people with Alzheimer's, dementia. So what a family could do is purchase a kit, they're online. You swab your family member with a gauze. There's a jar that it goes into, and then you keep that jar at your house. And if somebody does that, and we have a missing person, and we know that, we could send the canine team, and they could start their search by the family presenting that scent kit to Dolly, so she has a scent to go on. So my understanding is that scent kit, because it's swabbing somebody's skin, is like, it's, it's, you know, compared to handing the, Dolly a article of clothing of a family member, it's like game-changing, the swab of the skin. And so what we wanna do is eventually have a program where family members can have a swab of their family members, put in a kit, and then we'll put it in our computer-rated dispatch system. So that way, our dispatchers, as they're sending the officer to a missing person home, they're telling them, they're telling Ryan, hey, that family's got a scent kit at that house, and it'll just help, obviously, find missing people. And I don't know if you, if you're tracking media, but up here, we've had, in recent times, we've had bad things happen with Alzheimer's patients that didn't get found. I'm not sure if you're familiar, but that's, that's happened. So back to the, she sits, and she doesn't bark when she finds people. So if somebody is elderly, we don't want Dolly being all ecstatic and saying, I found her, and, or him, and jumping on them, right? Because that's not good. Or if somebody's on the spectrum and they're autistic, we don't want dogs barking at them. So that's, that's the benefit of having a dog like this. So that's pretty much our program. I'm gonna hand Ryan the badge to, to pin on Dolly.
Ryan, can we get a picture with her too?
Absolutely.
All right. Go on the council floor.
I brought it over here last night.
How should we?
Just pet her. Yeah. She's, she's very sweet.
She's, she's very sweet. Can you sit?
Should we all sit?
Sit, sit. Sit.
What's going on here?
Go, take pictures. Go, wait. Get a close-up. Yourself. Hey, Ryan Stampfass, real quick. So Mayor, I'm assuming council's gonna wanna have comment?
Yes, I would think so. We'll start over here, Sylvia.
Yes, I'm, I'm really happy to welcome Dolly. And, and one of my comments is that since she's the only one here, she could also be mutual aid, right? She can be mutual aid in other cities or other situations. So I'm just really happy to have her, she's so cute and adorable. And I'm glad that Ryan has her to, to continue training her. So thank you.
Okay. Well, if I could speak dog, I would say welcome. But it's delightful to have her and I love all of the people who came. Thank you so much for being here today. We love it when the hall is full. And welcome, sweet Dolly. We love your ears.
And yes, hello, Dolly. Happy to have you here. And I know that she will save lives, so I'm glad that she's part of our team.
Well, welcome, Dolly. And I think she is one of the best additions to our community. And we hope that your training goes well and she learns to do what she needs to do. And I'm sure she'll do great. But we're happy to have her in our community. Welcome, Officer Dolly.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Yes, Chief?
Mayor, I just have an announcement. So
Certainly.
For, for the media and for police staff, I'm gonna have you go to the police building for additional photographs and interviews of Ryan and Dolly, because our chambers get loud and we have council business to do. I appreciate everybody coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Look at her. All right, I don't know how we're gonna top that. We have just regular, regular old boring stuff now. So while everyone's filing out. Yeah. Yeah, I know, that's gotta be strange to her, yeah, yeah. Okay. Yeah, oh yeah, much louder to her from the light. Okay, while, while they're all filing out, Damian, can I ask you if there are any changes to the agenda?
No proposed changes, Mayor.
No proposed changes, okay. So since this is an action item, I will see if anyone in the public would like to speak on the approval of the final agenda. Not seeing anyone jump up. Kevin, can we see if anyone on Zoom wants to comment on the final agenda?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment on approval of the final agenda, please use the raise hand icon at this time. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Okay, thank you. Then we will move on to citizens' business and public comment for the consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to the City Council Policy 2021-01, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all of the consent calendar items. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. To facilitate public comment, the deputy city clerk will alert speakers when there are 30 seconds remaining. And so with that, anyone in the audience wishing citizens' business? Yes. Please.
So thank you for explaining, so anything that's not on the agenda, I can, okay?
Yes.
Okay, just two things. One is, I noticed that the cars, marked cars for the police cars are subdued in their logos and some are still black and white. My concern about the, the, this trajectory of them possibly going all subdued markings or no markings in the community are, when I'm in the community, I wanna be able to find a police officer. Black and white is how I recognize. When I'm in, living in the community, I wanna know there's a black and white squad car patrolling the community, because it makes me feel safe. I also am concerned about imposter vehicles pulling over people. I don't wanna be pulled over by an imposter, I wanna know who I'm dealing with. So for my tax dollar, I'd just like to have you reconsider that trajectory and think about how the voters might, you know, empathize with them to see how they might feel about that. That, that would really mean a lot to me. And then the only other item that I'm interested in is something completely, I don't know if you've heard about it, but there's a product called Sinez Tech made by Contra Pest, it's rodent birth control. I managed property for 38 years and I've been using this for two years. And I also am on the board of two homeowner associations. And we use it there as well. And it's really a cost-effective, rosemary-based birth control that's helped tremendously, including at my own home, where we had some problems in the rural area with rats. So just like to put that forth, if you're interested, I can send the information. I'm not getting anything out of it, other than getting rid of these, the rodents and not killing them with rodenticide, which is on its way out anyway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on the consent calendar or citizens' business? Not seeing anyone else jump up. Can you check with our Zoom attendees, please?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. For our Zoom attendees, please use the raise hand icon at this time if you'd like to make a public comment for citizens' business. Mayor Harvey, that will end public comment.
Okay, thank you for that. Oh, she left, I was gonna ask you to speak to the marking, oh, she, okay. Chief, Chief Parrish, can you please address that?
Yeah, so
That's all right.
Yeah, so the maj, the majority of our cars are, the majority of our patrol cars are black and white. So, I mean, I've been told that, that black and whites look too much like LAPD-ish and is over-the-top police. And then so this is just a different opinion. So, I mean, I don't know, I like the look of the subdued cars. I don't know of, of any imposters in the area pulling people over. That's, that I'm seeing. But again, it's kinda like, I don't know, it's differences of opinions. Again, I've heard the black and whites are a little too aggressive-looking. And then I get comments that they like the subdued cars. So it's a matter of choice. It's not something that I'm hung up on or not unwilling to change in the future.
Okay. Thank you. So I guess, that's what we know about that. And Damian, can you connect with her about the information on the products that she has in case we have a need for that? For your friends, like your gophers?
If you could leave your contact information with the deputy city clerk.
That'd be great. So thank you for that. All right. Then we will move on to the consent calendar. And we have four items on the consent calendar. First one is accept the fiscal year 2022-23 annual report of development impact fees for AB 1600. The second one is designation of signatures for orders for payment of monies, wire transfer services, and access for safe deposit boxes. The next item is resolution approving the Second Amendment to the lease agreement with Mwali MPL Tower Holdings LLC and authorizing the city manager to execute said agreement. And lastly, accept the civic center painting project. So is anyone on the council wanting to pull any of those items? No? Okay, then we've had public comment on these items, then I'd be looking for a motion.
I move to approve the consent calendar items.
A second? A motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That, let that show a four, one, absent. All right, then we will be moving on to item 11, which is direction on future agenda items. Yes, Laura?
Thank you. I've spoken to the city manager about this and will bring it up during strategic planning next year, but I just thought I'd bring it, let you know, I would like to see us look at an ordinance, a dark sky-friendly light pollution ordinance. And we'll be placing that on the strategic planning list next, next year.
Great, thank you. Nothing else, seeing nothing else. Then we will move on to the regular agenda. And we have a couple of items there. And the first one is a motion approving a land acknowledgement statement to be publicly displayed on the city website. And Damian, are you gonna take this item?
Yes, Mayor, I will. Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So land acknowledgement, as I think you probably already know, is a formal statement that recognizes and respects indigenous peoples as the traditional stewards of the land and the, and their enduring relationship with their, their traditional territories. And then in Sonoma, so this was a, previously this was a request of council to have a land acknowledgement statement. And in researching this, in Sonoma County, staff could find two examples of land acknowledgement statements by municipal or county government. And one was the city of Rona Park and one was the county of Sonoma. And those are the two that we were able to find in Sonoma County. So they take different approaches. Rona Park has a, a short statement that they, that they read at every agenda or every meeting in every agenda, right after the call to order. And I'm not gonna read it, but it's in the packet. So this is a short statement there. And then the county of Sonoma took a different approach. They adopted a formal land acknowledgement and they have that posted on their website. And several of the departmental pages also have, they have it in different departments that, I guess, generally that work in land. So the county statement is also printed in the agenda for anyone who wanna read it. And in conversation with the CEO of Progressive Tribal Alliance, who is a, they're, they're a nonprofit tribal group, they do a lot of ceremonies. And they try to raise awareness of, you know, tribal culture in, in this area, in this Sonoma County. So they're sort of an aggregation of many tribes that work together. Not like Greton or not like River Rock, the tribe up there, because they have a casino, so they have their own interests, but everyone else, basically. Federally recognized or not, is, is, is part of this group. And I s, I discussed the different options with him, what I'd seen, you know, there's this agenda format, which is a short, kinda to the point. Or there's the longer, there's a longer statement like Sonoma had. And the feedback that he gave me is, was that he had, that they had a preference for, well, first of all, positive land acknowledgement. In other words, one that was more, that recognized the past, but was more forward-looking, more positive, more like how, you know, they look at land acknowledgements, is what he, what they told me, is they look at land acknowledgements as really a starting point in a relationship. So it's just an initial acknowledgement, that's positive, that's forward-looking. And then hopefully, that's just the starting point for future collaboration of all different types. So a tribal, a land acknowledgement that emphasized respect, education, and collaboration was what the preference was, for sure. As opposed to, I, I think what they considered more of like a perfunctory sort of rote statement that Rona Park uses. And so working with them, the proposed land acknowledgement statement is, is basically my initial proposal and their edits to it. And this is where it is at the moment. I was, I was hoping that we'd have a representative here tonight, but they are not here, unfortunately, to give you any other feedback. But this is, this is just a proposal for council to consider. Both the language of the land acknowledgement and how the council would like to see this move forward. In other words, something that we adopt and displayed on our website or the, the other option, of course, is the Rona Park approach, which is just a short, like two-sentence thing. That's in the, in the agenda every time. So I guess with that, that's pretty much it. I'd be happy to answer any questions if I can on this.
I know that we got a public comment on it or we got a written comment on it, but that was, I was thinking myself, when I saw the information, that why wouldn't be able to do two? I'm just afraid that if we keep it on the website, then it, it's kinda like we put it on the shelf versus kinda make it actionable. So my preference would be maybe doing both, keeping it on the website, maybe a shorter version that we can read at, at the meetings, just to make it actionable and make it present. That's my thought. I mean, it's just, it's just, I think, a, a different way of kinda recognizing indigenous peoples. And so that's my, my thought and recommendation. I'd like to, you know, hear what the rest of the council thinks.
Okay.
Yeah, I had exactly the same thought when I read through this. I, it's not clear to me that we couldn't do both. And then also that the shorter version we do every time remains positive and emphasizes the respect and relationships and all of the things that they specifically asked for in a very, in a much shorter version. And then the longer version, maybe referring to the longer version in the shorter version, so people know to go to the website to read the whole thing, but some type of abbreviated version each time we meet, I think would be really powerful.
Thank you. I really appreciate that this was, that we were able to connect with the Progressive Tribal Alliance. I know their representatives aren't there, but I wanted to extend my gratitude that they engaged with us on this. And I, I like the language of the, the proposed language. I especially like the last sentence. It says, this acknowledgement does not take the place of authentic relationships with indigenous communities, but serves as a gesture of respect to the land that we are on. I feel that sometimes land acknowledgements can be just a box that people check and they don't follow through. And I, I really appreciated the way you described it as the beginning of, of a, of a real relationship. And I, I would kind of wondered if we could circle back with them and see how they would, what they would think about doing this whole acknowledgement on the website, but perhaps reading the first and the last paragraphs as our kind of shorter verbal version at meetings. That would be my, I, I agree, it would be nice to read something shorter at, at the meetings.
Okay. The only addition that I would like to see added would be that whatever language that we decide on, especially the longer version, I would like to see it possibly memorialized here at City Hall, framed and, and put somewhere within the building so that as people come to City Hall, they can see that. So, it sounds like we don't have a final here.
Right, so if we, so what I'm hearing, the will of the council is to, is to include it in our agendas, which I think that's okay, too. So, I'll have to bring back the council rules, because we have to amend the agenda order to insert this item into it. So, I could do that at the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So, yes.
Sorry, I had one more question, which I forgot. We did receive a public comment that claims that we should, says that we should say, it should read coastal Miwaka and southern Pomo. Can you speak to that? Did you speak with the Progressive Alliance about that?
We, yeah, we did. So, I have to start this response by saying I am far from an expert in the ancestral ranges of these people. But when I was, when I was speaking with them, we did talk about the ranges, the ancestral areas of the different tribes, and the geographic features that generally delineated those tribes. And they seemed pretty clear that it was coastal Miwaka. And they also read this and didn't comment on that being wrong or needing adding southern Pomo. I can certainly ask again to make sure, make double or triple sure that there's no overlap. I know the commenter was looking at Rona Park, but Greaton tribe has some different things going on. And I don't know that is necessarily the range here, it's just how they describe themselves, the Greaton tribe.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I will, yes, Kay?
I just wanted to clarify, I thought I heard you say that it would be, the whole thing would be in the agenda. And I think what we were saying is that the whole thing would be on the website, and that a smaller version would be something that we would read aloud each time.
But it has to get inserted as, at what he was saying, as an item. Is it item six? Is it item seven? Is it? And that's within our council rules, that's what he was saying. We'll have to-
Oh, the reading of the shorter version?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
It will have to be.
I misunderstood that it was going to go in, the whole thing was going to go in.
No, just a shorter one, but it has to have a spot.
So, yeah, the suggestion was, that I heard from the council, was paragraphs one and, well, four be combined and be the version that would be in the agenda from the longer statement, something along those lines. So, I'll, I will come back with a proposed statement as well when I bring back the update to the council rules, assuming the council wants to approve this.
So, I, but I thought you said they were most interested in education. I mean, I guess I, I feel like I'm not ready to say yes, one and four. Like, can we take a little more time to go through it and decide? Like, because I didn't realize this was going to be an option. You know, and maybe ask, you know, how they would feel best about it, kind of thing? Or like, you know, rather than just deciding ourselves about them?
You mean, maybe give us a chance to rework the language or look at it?
Yeah, for the shorter version.
Well, I mean, I think that that's kind of what Damian did, but we're, we're trying, we're veering away from what the Alliance had suggested. And so, I think he's suggesting he'll go back and say that the council's saying they want both. Whereas what the Alliance said was they prefer just the longer one, it's more meaningful to them. But what the council's saying is, is different than what they asked. So, it doesn't hurt to go back to them and say, "Our council would like to do both."
Yeah.
And-
We're arguing in agreement here, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I've talked to a few people outside, you know, in other spaces, including like some professors, like Indigenous instructors. And I think that they have also said that it would be good to kind of include it in our meetings, you know, so, a little statement. So, I'm not sure whether it was presented to Tribal Alliance as both, or just one, or was that, did it come from them?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't get the sense that they would, I mean, just so you guys know, I don't think they would necessarily say it was one or the other. I think they just said, "Our preference is the longer one, we like the longer format." If we wanted to do both, I don't think they'd be opposed to it necessarily.
Okay.
That's the sense I got.
So, I guess my, my question is, I'm sorry, but just, you know, given that we're going to do both, instead of just saying we'll do one and four, say, "Hey, you know, if we're going to do both, what of this would you want us to include in the agenda and to be read at every meeting?"
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy, I mean, I was planning to run any short statement even by them to make sure that they're okay with it. But I'd be happy to work on it, bring it back.
So.
Yeah, so when I suggested one and four, it was with, I had also said, you know, that you could, I had asked him to bring it to them and see what they would think about that. And I, I think my understanding, and tell me if I'm right or not, I thought that the, the longer statement was worked out with them specifically for the website. Is that correct? Yeah. So, yeah, if they, if they prefer that we read the whole thing at the meeting, then I would want to hear that. But I just kind of want to know what they think about a shorter statement, yeah.
We, we had a conversation about it. I don't think they want us to read the whole thing, because that would be, I don't think they, they wanted to drone on through the whole statement. They just wanted something, well, I didn't really talk about, because they were focused on the longer one. But like I said, I don't think they'd be opposed to a shorter one, and I'll just work with them on it, if the council wants me to.
Okay. So, are we set there? Okay, so then I will open this up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Not seeing anyone run up to the podium or raise their hand. So, I will go to our Zoom attendees. Kevin?
Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment on this item, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Okay, thank you for that. So, then do you want a motion now, or do you want to wait till you bring it back? What?
Why don't I just bring it back? And I just got direction from council, and I'll bring it back.
Okay.
Well, can I, can I just offer the, the motion is to put it on the website? And I think we all agree to do that. So, could we do the, the smaller statement as a separate item in the future?
Yeah, I mean, you could adopt a motion to put this on the city website, and also separately direct me to also develop a short agenda statement.
Okay.
Okay. Can I make the motion?
That's fine.
Okay, so I move that we approve the land acknowledgement statement to be publicly displayed on the city website.
I'll second it. All right, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
And one absent, four and one absent? Okay. All righty then, moving right along here. I've lost my, I've lost my spot. Oh, because I turned this, thank you. So, the next item is item B, which is approve, approve and issue report on measures taken to alleviate conditions leading to adoption of interim urgency ordinance number 922, preserving senior mobile home parks. So, Damian, is that also you? Thank you, Laura.
It is, yeah, thank you. All right, so just a quick trot down memory lane. September 12th of this year, the council adopted an urgency ordinance, conducted a public hearing after, considered an urgency ordinance, conducted a public hearing, after which the council adopted Urgency Ordinance 922, which is attached in the, in this packet. And this temporary urgency ordinance suspended the conversion of any senior mobile home parks in Kattati to all age mobile home parks. Pursuant to Government Code Section 65858D, the city is issuing this report, which is attached as Exhibit B, describing the measures taken to alleviate the conditions which led to the adoption of the urgency ordinance. The conditions that led to the adoption of the ordinance are listed in the ordinance, also in the staff report. And they are still present as of the date of this report to council. So, the following measures and actions have been taken since September 12th, when the urgency ordinance was adopted. The city council directed staff to study options for ensuring that senior mobile home parks within the city are preserved in accordance with the various general plan goals and policies cited in the urgency ordinance. Based on council direction, city staff have met with the mobile home park owner to better understand the issues. And on September 26th, the council approved staff resources for the remainder of the current fiscal year to work on this unexpected project. And staff are currently developing proposed amendments to the city zoning code to preserve existing senior mobile home parks. Prior to any extension of the interim urgency ordinance beyond the initial 45-day ordinance period, staff will bring the matter back to city council to recommend conducting a noticed public hearing in accordance with the Government Code Section 65090. So, we expect to be back on October 24th, which is the next council meeting, to consider some type of extension based on the, where we are in terms of the progress on bringing forth the zoning changes. So, that's pretty much it, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Yes.
Are we going to hear about what's happened since the last time we saw this in, in your manager's report? Or does that happen now?
No, this is, this is it. Just that, just that we've started work on the zoning ordinance to implement the senior overlay.
Okay, because I, I thought, I recalled you saying you, there was going to be a meeting with the lawyers and-
Yeah, we met with the, with the park owner.
Okay, and the results of that meeting, when do we hear about that?
Well, nothing definitive at this point.
Okay. So, there's, there's nothing to share?
Nothing to report, really, at this point.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sylvia?
I don't have any questions right now.
Okay, all right. Then I will open this item up for public comment. Mike, did you, are you, are you getting up? All right, it was like, okay, that's all right.
Why does it actually have a question?
Well, come on, it's-
For right now, it's an emergency ordinance. What, what happens, like, there's four units that are empty over there. This guy decides to put 25-year-olds in there, what's the story on that? Do you know? Do we have any?
We don't have a definitive answer to your question at the moment. We will eventually, when the ordinance is enacted.
Isn't it already an emergency ordinance to stop him from doing that? So, if he does, how do we stop him?
Well, you report whatever you see to us, and we'll, we'll take-
Okay, that's my question, I guess, to report to you.
Well, I, I can't guarantee you what action we will take, but if you report it to us, then we'll, we'll take a look.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yeah. I, I don't want to, I don't want to commit to anything.
No, no.
That's why I'm responding the way I am.
I'm just curious, because that's what he's going to do. And then if he gets 80% or 20% of people that aren't seniors, it becomes an all-age park. That's my understanding of it, I'm all right.
Well, I'm sorry, I shouldn't be speaking to the public directly. Mayor and council, there are two different viewpoints about this. The park owner has one view that, that the mobile home residency law controls. And our view, if we do adopt this ordinance, is that there's a separate zoning ordinance that requires it to be a senior park. So, we're going to be debating that with the park owner eventually here, if we enact this ordinance. And we've already kind of started debating that with the park owner. He needs a little bit of legal education. I need a little bit of legal education, and Damian does as well. But we'll reconcile all that stuff and, and come back to you with a, a final recommendation about the ordinance in the future.
Okay, thank you.
So, I can't ask anything more? I'm just a little confused about what happens if he does this. What, I mean, in the end, whether we pass an ordinance or not, if he's got people in there, you gotta, we're not going to evict them, we're not going to ask them to be.
So, Damian, can you-
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't know.
Meet up with Mike or call Mike and get this-
Sure, yeah, I mean, but, yeah, I'd be happy to, of course. We, I mean, we talk, but-
Okay.
But the short answer is, as the city attorney said, if you, if you see that occurring, let us know, and then we can evaluate options. But right here, at this moment, I don't, we don't have the answer, yeah.
I just want to know who to talk, what to do.
Yeah. Call us.
What I hear is see something, say something.
Right. As opposed to us taking it and throwing it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Not seeing anyone here. Can you check with the Zoom audience?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you wish to make a public comment on this item, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Okay, then I will bring it back to the council and would be looking for a motion.
I move that we approve and issue a report on measures to take, taken to alleviate conditions leading to the adoption of interim urgency ordinance number 922, preserving senior mobile home parks.
A second? A motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, one absent, so four with one absent. All right. Thank you for that. And then I guess we will move next on to the city manager's report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, a reminder that we are doing a drug take-back event later this month, on October 28th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. On East School here, right behind, at the Ray Miller Room, right in the community center, right behind us. So, that's, that's our annual big drug, drug take-back event. But we also have the bin and the police department lobby, so that's always there all year round. And we also are now officially, despite the little typo in the agenda, Mayor, that you stamped out, we are officially switched over to civic-ready now, so no more Nixle. And if anyone still needs to do that, we're still, you know, we're obviously putting the word out and encouraging people to switch over to civic-ready, so that they get all the different alerts or public information that we put out. And a short update on projects. Just so you know, the Park and Ride project is just cruising along. The Airport Boulevard lot is all cleared and graded, and they're starting to put utilities in, which is great. The Petaluma Park and Ride, they are, they're not, well, they've kind of staked it out, but they're not really doing much work yet, but very soon they'll be working on the Petaluma site. Street paving, we are, we've done some initial slurry. You can see kind of half of a road, for example, slurried here in front of City Hall. And we have two more days, this Thursday and Friday, and then striping next week, a week later. So, this is the, this is the preventative maintenance side of things that we do to avoid more costly treatments on the roadways if we don't do this and allow them to degrade and have to do a rebuilding project. So, along with this, we're also doing our annual sidewalk, our sidewalk project. So, we started this as a pilot project many years ago, the council did. And we're continuing, we continue to do it where we go around. We have a contractor that can do basically horizontal cutting on concrete. So, they go out and find sidewalks that are offset, they've like offset a little bit, they can go and just shave them down, so that they're, you know, hopefully not tripping hazards for people. And this year, we're doing 251 locations, so. I mean, we do this, this or more every year, but it's all, it's never, it's a moving target. It never, sidewalks never stop moving, so. It's, it's a kind of a minor to moderate repair method that we, that we use to take the obligation off of property owners, who are by law, under Streets and Highway Code, required to fix the sidewalks in front of their homes. We also have a survey out right now, the Santero specific plan update is, is going on. So, there is a survey that's out, and we're looking for people's input on that, so look for that. And then this coming Saturday, October 14th, we're hosting a workshop on the Veranda Fleddy Ranch barn. It's 11:00 a.m. here at City Hall, we're going to be doing it in person and also via Zoom. And it's to help us decide on the sort of design and function of the barn space. And at a real high level still, we haven't gotten into any detailed design yet. Starting next Friday, October 20th, we have our first ever Kattati Fall Festival at the ranch. So, we have two weekends in October, so it's the next week, next Friday, the 20th, and then the following weekend. Your family can come out to the ranch for a full day of fall fun, including pumpkin, including a pumpkin patch, visits with animals, treats, photo ops, live games, veggie picking, crafts, and more. It's $5 per person over three years old, and space is limited, so there's a sign-up for it if anyone wants to go. And related to that, we also, just a reminder, we have our first scarecrow contest at the ranch this year. And from now until September, or November 6th, we're accepting homemade scarecrow submissions at the ranch by a- we're accepting homemade scarecrow submissions at the ranch by appointment, and they're going to be displayed in November for the community to vote on the winner. So hopefully the first year is successful and we get some, um, some good scarecrows. And then later in October, we're on, this is actually on Halloween, we're hosting our, um, fourth annual Kattati Candyland event in downtown Kattati. It's from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. Uh, again, that's Halloween Day. Children and families can trick or treat throughout La Plaza Park and at various Kattati businesses. It's a free event, and it's, um, quickly become a local tradition, and we look forward to partnering with our local businesses on this event for the community, so that's, um, that's always super fun. And then, um, registration is also open for Camp Kattati Thanksgiving Camp. It's Monday through Wednesday of the week of Thanksgiving while, while children are out of school, but their parents are not out of school. And they have to, uh, have their kids, um, doing hopefully something productive and not just hanging at home all day on their phones or whatever they do when they're at home all day. Um, and so, uh, we have cra, games, crafts, movies, um, from 8:00 to 5:00 each day. Space is also limited in this, so we encourage people to sign up early. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Is the family, the Fall Family Festival a replacement for the, like, Oktoberfest or Harvest Festival?
It's, um, it's the same, the Harvest Festival and this are the same thing.
Okay.
Think this might be the official Kattati Fall Festival, might be the, oh, sorry. I use a pseudonym just to confuse everyone. It's the Harvest Fall, it's the same thing.
Okay, thank you.
As Oktoberfest?
As the Fall Festival.
Harvest Festival is, the Fall Festival is the same as the Harvest Festival.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
I guess I thought I heard you say Oktoberfest at one point.
I did.
Okay, and like.
All right. Anyone else? No? Okay, then we will move on to city council member reports, okay? Um, so I didn't really have, I had a, one coffee with Kay, and so, you know, thanks to those who showed up. I always appreciate hearing from you and knowing what's going on with you. And just a reminder, it's the last Wednesday of the month that, well, I should say the fourth Wednesday of the month, because sometimes there are five. And then I was asked by a member of the public to mention that, uh, today in 1911, the Panama Canal was opened. And we were just curious about, you know, what the human cost of that. So I also want to just honor the 25,000 people who died building the Panama Canal. And that's really all I had for today. Thank you. Sylvia?
Hey, yes, so on, uh, September 28th, I went to the Losián State of the Latinx Community. Um, and the topic was the power of belonging, shifting mindsets, and transforming community. They had the executive director of a nonprofit, uh, from Los Angeles called Seeds LLC. Her name is Evan Holland, Evan Holland, a really great speaker. And then October 5th, uh, last, last week was the Sonoma Clean Power Meeting. I'm an alternate, but I was online. It was the longest meeting in a while, four hours, four hours. Um, and I think one of the topics that, um, some of our local constituents kind of had, we had, um, talked about was, it was on the consent calendar, but ended up being like a long conversation, is about how Sonoma Clean Power gets 16% of their energy from biomass energy, which really impacts communities like in Fresno and, and underserved communities. Um, but the thing that we found out is that that contract expires in 2024, and they're not planning on renewing that, so that was good. But they give a geothermal opportunity zone update, um, and some other things, but that was the biggest thing. They also gave an update on the Empower and Programs Equity, uh, which is really good. They talked about all the different programs that they're doing with, within a community for engagement. And also this Friday, I'm joining some of the Sonoma Clean Power staff and volunteer at the Redwood Empire Food Bank to help pack food. So that's happening, uh, this, this Friday. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nothing to report tonight?
Okay. Um, I attended a very short mosquito and vector control meeting, nothing to report out of that. But yesterday I attended the, uh, SCTA, our CPA, um, meeting, and we actually hired a new executive director. Um, it's James Cameron. He was the assistant. Uh, I don't, I can't remember his exact title, but he was his.
Yeah, deputy, I think.
Deputy Suzanne, yeah, yeah. He was, um, the, the second in, in line there, so, um, we're happy to, to have him, um, with us. Um, and so he, we look forward to that. He, um, plans on, you know, kind of doing a lot of the same things, um, that we're doing and, uh, get more familiarity with the, um, climate items. Because that, he's more of a transportation guy, so he wants to put a little bit more focus and look at things like, um, when they do transportation stuff, how can they roll in the climate aspect of it? So think, rather than, right now they're kind of real separate, kind of, where can we look for opportunities to do things together? Which is, I think, pretty smart to do that. And also, you'll be happy to know, Laura, that they, um, did, um, get responses for the e-bikes. They, the RFP came back, and we actually got four responses, which was good because we finally asked, you know, because the last time they got none. So this time they got four vendors. They all are looking promising. They have to actually pick one and negotiate a contract and, and, uh, the person was asked, okay, so when can we expect to see them? And they said, well, provided we can get contracts, you know, done, um, we'll probably be looking at spring, um, to do that. So that is moving forward. And that is all I have to report. So with that, we can move on to public comment on non-action agenda items. Anybody wishing to speak on non-action agenda items in the audience? Not seeing anyone jump up, so, um, we will go to Zoom.
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. We do have one hand up from our Zoom attendees. Lori, you have the floor?
Lori, can you speak up a little bit louder? You're, it, it's kind of quiet.
Okay, hold on.
Okay.
Okay, um, this is in reference to the city manager's report. Um, he discussed the, um, parking lot, park and ride lot with James Freeman, and I'd like for it more publicly to be known what that is all about, that our Kattati tax payer dollars are paying for park and ride improvements in, um, Petaluma and a whole new one in Airport Boulevard, and that we are be, having our parks delayed and having other cuts because of this. And I have not heard a word, other than Damian mentioning it now, on, um, in the city manager report. This needs to be known, um, that there was a big cost overage over the sales price. So to meet the contract, um, to do the, as it was in 2014, um, agreed on, we ended up having to pay the money. So I just feel that this needs to be much more advertised and much more known to the public.
Thank you for your comments.
Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
All right, thank you for that. Then we can move on. Is there any information received after the agenda was posted? I believe we have two comment letters.
Yes, that's correct, Mayor Harvey. There were two, uh, public comments received after the agenda was posted. So those were uploaded to the web agenda and provided to the Council and are available in print tonight in the chamber.
Yes, Laura. Is it possible for someone to briefly respond to the comments about the park and ride?
Damian?
So, um, it's, it's on the project page, and we handle it like any other capital project. I wouldn't recommend we do anything special with it. It's just a capital project like any other. And it's advertised the same way any other project is.
I, I guess I'd just like to say for anyone in the public who's listening that, that, um, the deal, and city manager, please correct me if I say anything that's not factually correct. But my understanding of the deal was that, um, you know, that park and ride land along Old Redwood Highway had to be, if, if, if we wanted anything to happen there other than for it to be a parking lot, it had to be sold, and we had to, uh, in, in return, make improvements to other Caltrans properties, uh, other park and rides. And that hopefully the, any cost accrued by, uh, carried by the city right now will hopefully be, um, recouped through taxes and property tax and, and transit and occupancy tax, uh, once the hotel is built there. So I just want to make it clear that we're not just building parking lots elsewhere for no reason. It's part of a broader, um, uh, reason that's in line with our city goals, so thank you.
Sure, yeah, and I.
Do you want to reiterate what the agreement was since you were a party to it?
So we have a, so we had a park and ride that was unused essentially. There was very few, if any, cars in there ever. Caltrans was not going to sell the property, and so we had a giant hole in our downtown that we couldn't. And we'd heard for, um, for many years from many people that they didn't want to develop our downtown because you had a giant hole in it with a parking lot, and that's not, it was not the vision in the downtown plan that the community wanted. So, um, staff, uh, negotiated with Caltrans to get a property that was not for sale, and, um, quite honestly, got, um, got a great deal. And, um, and to Vice Mayor Sparks's point, there is a one-time investment now, but it's going to be, um, with taxes and so forth. It's going to be repaid very quickly and continuously forever, as long as the hotel is in operation. So it's, um, there's a small investment upfront, but it's going to more than pay itself off very quickly and then just be positive revenue for the community to do all the things that, um, the community wants us to do.
And just to reiterate that, so, so the public does know, sitting as a park and ride lot, we collect no property tax on it. But once that, um, was resold to the hotel developer, it will now become property that we, in addition to TOT, which you alluded to, we also will, um, get property tax on that property that we never were getting before, so.
Property and sales tax.
And sales, yes.
And unlocking development in our entire downtown.
Yeah. So, okay, is that good? Okay, welcome. Information received. So here we are. We are at 7:17, and I will call our meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.